Oh, yeah.
Good God.
Our chart size.
Bill, I think you got your wish. You could read this from, I'll give it preserved.
In fact, did anybody have anything that they wanted to pull on the consent agenda? We'll go ahead and do that.
What's the difference between spread three day and spread three two?
That's a really good question.
What's that?
I thought the same thing was true, Mr. Guy. But anyway, was there any, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items five, excuse me, four A and four B? I'll make a motion. Do I have a second? We have a motion in a second to accept consent agenda items four A and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So, okay. Now we have in front of us the information that Mr. Guy had requested on...
Item three B, I think, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, I was just looking to make sure I got the right item. Yes, item three B, aye. Mr. Guy, since you wanted to see this, I'll just ask if you have any questions of my opinion or any observations that you wanted to bring up.
Well, the only observation I have is after thirty seconds of looking at it is that we have a lot more expenditures than we have in town, but that's not totally surprising.
No, I don't think that's any surprise or any change.
Does the soccer complex annual operating cost, Mike, include the thirty thousand capital that we were recommended by Bentley setting aside annually for the lights?
I did not put the, that thirty thousand into this. I just put the, the cost without annual repairs is a hundred and sixty-five thousand as I noted there.
What was it, thirty thousand is what?
Thirty, Bentley Electric came in and did an analysis of the aging of our lights and the replacement that we're going to have to do, not that four hundred thousand dollar big deal, to basically upgrade our lights at the end of their useful life. And it worked out to be thirty thousand a year that we need to be adding to the budget, unless we want to take at the end of five years, we pick up, bite the bullet. My deal is, I think that cost should be added to it right now and be done with it.
What was the year, I'm sorry, what was the year, the life?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, yeah.
Five to seven years to the life?
Yeah.
What we have now?
Well, no, we have two sets. We have some that were done originally, just recently, and some that were done before. And so he just averaged them out and it worked out to be about thirty thousand a year.
So, the question here is, are we ready now with having this information in front of us to set the public hearing for December 2nd at our next board meeting?
But we don't have the, we don't have the rates, though.
Those are, that's what the big sheet is, that has the rates.
That's what this is.
Yeah, the only, the only thing, and I'll make, I'll make it simple as far as, because I think I'm the one that's, that does the cog in the wheel here. I propose taking that two forty-three, adding thirty thousand, dividing by six thousand ERCs, which works out to be forty-five, and I'll round back and say forty, and have a surcharge to the deal for any family that has kids that don't live in Gateway.
Can I make one point real quick? They, at the, at the bottom, you see what, these are the revenues that we receive each year from the different associations, from the three. Once we hit January with the proposed increases, this amount is going to increase. And I, what I was asking is that we set those revenues aside, and that's what I can, that's what we can then use to repair the fields.
Well, my, my thing is that I, I don't want to do anything, I'm willing to subsidize to the tune of whatever we're subsidizing at this point in time, which looks like eighty-five percent maybe, of everybody paying that extra cost that we're not receiving as revenue. But I have a hard time of doing that with the people that don't live in Gateway. I've been told, and I don't have anything to prove it other than what I've heard, is that fifty percent of that soccer league comes from outside Gateway. I didn't even hear higher numbers than that. My point is, is that the average family in Gateway, by these calculations, is paying forty dollars to that, to that field. I'm not asking to penalize one family in Gateway, they're already paying for it by the fact that they're paying dues to the, the league and they're paying dues to us. But those that are outside, they're getting a free ride, and to me, no way.
Well, they're not getting a free ride, they pay more to join the league than a resident does.
But it isn't coming to us.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
That forty dollars is coming to us?
It's twenty dollars annually for, it's twenty dollars annually that the league's charging on Gateway residents, and that money is turned over.
My deal is, my deal is, I'm just saying right now that the number, the factual number is forty dollars. That's what they need to be paying us to break even.
They're paying.
And I, I'm not saying anything about any Gateway residents, those, they stay as it is, but the others, they're going to have to toe the line and pay the forty bucks. And if we have, how many kids are in the program?
Which one?
Ballpark, the ones that are using this field.
The total per season, you, you have a, about anywhere from eleven hundred to twelve hundred kids.
So, say twelve hundred.
And that's, I'm sorry, that's including elite soccer.
Flag football.
Okay, say there's twelve, say twelve hundred. And it's fifty percent, that's six hundred out, out of, out of Gateway. Six hundred times forty, that's twenty-four thousand bucks. That almost, we're getting half that.
And for me, you can't ever expect the soccer bits to break even.
I'm not asking for that.
Parks and, Parks and Rec.
Not asking for that.
It doesn't break even.
I'm not asking for that.
So, I, I disagree with you. I think the benefit of having the leagues here and having the fields is worth, the money that in value when people are looking at our community to purchase in it when they live here is worth forty dollars to me.
To my residents, Margaret, it's not.
If they're, if they're eventually going to be selling their houses, they're going to sell them to people that have families, like more than likely, so.
That's not happening in Gateway Greens.
It's the same argument where, you know, I could say, or anyone could say, I, I pay about the same amount for the common pool area now usually. So, there's going to be many that you use, many that you don't, some are...
That's elective for us here, I don't have a problem with that, and I'm not asking for one penny of additional revenue from our existing families. Alls I'm saying is people that are outside this community and pay no taxes to this community, we're already up over five hundred, next year we're going to go over six hundred, the year after that, we're going to go over seven hundred. It's got to have some type of control on it, and one way of doing it is people that don't pay taxes here are going to be surcharged. And I, I'm glad we're doing half, but they need to go all the way, twenty, take it to And that's the only, only change I would make in the entire deal.
I support Chairman's statement.
To put it to rest, make a motion, see if you get a second.
I will make the motion that, well, I, I don't know how we do this, other than the fact that I would suggest a surcharge on all use of the soccer field, all use, not just selecting one group. Anybody that is outside Gateway will have a surcharge that comes directly to Gateway through the sponsor of that league in the amount of forty dollars per family, not per kid, per family. So, if somebody's got five kids, they're going to pay two hundred, just pay forty.
Okay. May I further discussion?
I'll just say one thing. I've never been in favor of this surcharge to non-Guardway residents, because we're leasing the fields to the leagues. I think if, if there was conversation on how we justify our, the amount that we charge for leasing, it should be all inclusive. I don't, I think it's, I think it's difficult for the leagues to charge someone more because they don't live in the community when the league is not, you know, we've got a competitive program that is not flagged as a Gateway-sponsored facilitated league. We've got Gateway Flag uses Gateway as the name, but it's not ran by the district, you know. So, we shouldn't be charging the participants of the leagues. We should be either looking to recoup that in the lease agreement, but I don't like the approach of telling someone that they have to pay more to sign up for a league when we've got a third party who's managing those leagues and it's not directly, it was different, we had Parks and Rec person here that we were running it and, you know, he was under our jurisdiction, but it's not, it's a third party. So, I, I've always disagreed with the surcharge. I think there's, there's a better way for us to look at it from a lease agreement.
You just said earlier, we're already doing it to the tune of twenty.
Right, but I disagree with it, I think the concept altogether, I don't disagree with, you know, that if you're a, if you live in Gateway, that technically you're taxed...
You've paid for it.
Well, you're...
If you're in Gateway, and if the math is correct, and we have six thousand ERCs, you've already paid for it.
Well, you're paying for the, the maintenance of the, for the fields, it doesn't necessarily mean the use.
And the, and the thought process was that residents are already paying some for the maintenance of the fields. So, a non-resident, she would have to pay a little bit more to be on the league, because they're getting the benefit that the residents aren't getting to pay for them.
No, I understand in theory, I'm saying the execution of it is, is very good.
So, I'm in favor.
But we're not collecting it, we're not collecting it from the kids anyway, we're collecting it from the sponsors of the leagues. So, it's, it's not our deal that we're going out and collecting it, they're just adding it as an extra, they can call it whatever they want. In reality, though, it's a surcharge to cover the cost of the operation and maintenance of a facility that, where we're subsidizing it for our kids to the tune of eighty-five, ninety percent, I have no problem with that, I'm not even going to argue with that. But I don't want to do that for people that don't live here.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and, and call the question.
Madam Chairman? I guess, guess for, oh, the question of Mr. Tinkles' motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just going to say, I, I agree with the way that it's set up now, it's worked well, and I don't think that we can expect for this, for our Parks and Rec to make, it's not a money-making proposition, it's for, it's for enjoyment and family.
It has to be across the board.
Has to be across the board.
If we're, if we're doing it for one of the leagues or two of those, if we're, you're going to, if we're going to say that if we vote yes, that we're going to continue that, and I think that the motion is not to continue it, your motion is to...
Right, we want to increase it.
But I would just add to that, or maybe that's a separate motion, that, okay, got it.
I don't know what you just said, but...
Just ignore it, I'll come back.
Just go ahead, okay. However, down here for non-residents, we have twenty-five dollars per player for year for armadillo sports. So, you are not being consistent when you're doing non-residents twenty and then non-residents twenty-five.
Well, that's why I tried to clarify, mine is across the board.
And we'll come, we'll come back to that, that can be a separate motion, but Ed wants to increase it across the board, forty dollars per family that are non-residents in Gateway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
I'm opposed, so that favors.
Madam Chairman, I may, just briefly for the board's discussion, I guess for clarification also, Michael, is this the current list, or is this proposed?
It's proposed.
Because I, I think what's confusing on this, it indicates that, you know, prior approvals from two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, and it's possible, I think, for the public once it's determined that this would be accepted for purpose of advertisement, to be strike-through underlining, delineating the proposed changes, so when someone looks at it, they can readily tell. And also, and I take off, you may want to put that as a key on the bottom, just for it as key, because again, that approved on reflects the current state as opposed to proposed. That's all, Madam Chairman, I think that would be helpful.
So, you're just saying this large sheet?
Would have strike-throughs and underlining with a key indicating that, so when somebody says, you can have a copy of it, they can see it.
Yeah, it was right up against it.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And just to respond to you, did you look at what the different classifications were and the charges that were going to be for those?
Like, I do know that, you know, it's different, but I still feel that if you're going to charge one, it should be consistent all the way through, because what's good for one is good for the other, that's how I feel.
Well, for the, like, the last one where you're looking at a non-resident being at twenty-five dollars, that's for a one-time usage of the field for a party, an office event, that's not an ongoing. So, there, it does make sense if you look at it with clarity as to what those different categories of usage are.
Right, but it's per player per year, twenty-five dollars. The other one is per family per year, so it should be, at least if it's not the twenty, it should be the twenty-five, as the other one is.
I would agree.
So, that, you know, it, it is, it's consistent. So, all right, I'll make a motion to change the, the twenty to twenty-five then, per family per year, so that it's consistent all the way through. And if I could a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yeah.
It, the, the league, the, the annual, it's a one-time, the, for a fam, for a player, actually, family for the year. This is different, right? That's a per-use, single instance charge, right? So, that, the terms of services are not, they're not the same.
It's not a league deal.
To me, it makes more sense to just take off the per-year.
You mean for the event? Maybe it's per-event, per-event might be the way to do it, yeah.
Because what, I pay one, I pay one time that I can come and use the, whatever I want, and that's, that's all.
This would be like a company pick.
Yeah, I think per-event, yeah, that would, that would, that would be correct.
The strike-through would be...
Not per-year and per-event.
Per-event or use. And there's another strike-through on, under, Group Three. Gateway School League and Sports Activity Use Programs are compatible with the intended use of soccer field. I would strike soccer and say, field use, because it's not a specific soccer field, it's a multi-use field, and we should have a, something outlining what is consistent with what we would consider acceptable field usage activities on such.
Instead of the strike-through, yeah, I agree with that, instead of the strike-through, wouldn't you just be able to do two of these, the one that is present and the one we're proposing, rather than the strike-through?
Well, you could.
Just have both of them.
But, but I think what you may, I think you need to label it as proposed.
Yes.
And I think it's always helpful, though, the strike-through underlining shows the changes in one glance, you can have it like front and back, you know, existing and proposed. On one sheet of paper, do two-sided, so if anybody comes behind.
If you wanted to do it that way, okay.
So, you're saying, do I get, under, under this, it should be per?
Right here.
No, I'm looking, I'm actually looking at this, because we have to deal with Kathy Jones first.
Yes.
If this is per-family, per-season?
Per-event.
It's...
For use, yeah, for use or per-event.
Per-event.
No, no, we should be looking at, we're looking at such a three-row, um, or column...
Field.
Fields.
Correct.
And it's, it's per-year, I think, the, the way it's set up now.
Right, if you look at the three, the three asterisks, it's the, the, non-resident, these are annual...
So, if they use it ten times, they don't, they only pay it once?
No, this, it's, it's a league suspension, so if I sign up for spring season, whether it's soccer or flag, I get charged the twenty dollars to offset what, I mean, it's half what it was.
It's January to January, so when, so they actually do get charged forty dollars, because when they play fall ball, they're charged the twenty dollars, and then, once we go to January, because this is January to January, they are charged another twenty dollars when they sign up for spring ball.
If they do both.
So, they technically do get charged...
Correct.
Forty, yeah, so.
If they do both.
So, it's per-family, per-season then, not per-year? I mean, it needs to be clear that if you're...
Well, we do it, we do it per calendar, we do it from January to January, so it, it covers one year.
I mean, what, what makes this difficult, I mean, you might have eighty percent of families, I don't even think it's money, but I have probably seventy percent play spring and fall. So, you could pay once and only play that one season, you could pay twice and pay and play both seasons, I mean, and that's hard to track, that, you know, from apples to apples. It, it should be based on maybe a percentage that, or whatever the, the number is annually that the league's going to substantiate, okay, so fifty percent of my, my players are, are participants, are, you know, outside Gateway residents, and then you back it through a number that way.
I'm going to, I'm actually going to call Kathy's question, so we deal with it first, and that was that she wanted to make the twenty-five dollars for non-residents, and she'd extend that into category, uh, Group Three and Group Four. So, instead of being twenty, it would be twenty-five for Groups Three and Four, correct?
Correct.
Just like this.
Same as it is.
Correct. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to go with that, you know, I think that's, that's not unreasonable for an entire year, because...
But, six is not per-year, it's, that's a, that's a single instance use.
We'll deal with that next, because that'll be...
So, you're, you're excluding six, right, so you're just saying three and what's in there, I'm sorry?
Three and four could go to twenty-five dollars.
Go up to twenty-five and, oh, yeah, got it, sorry.
Because that's per-family, that's not, most people probably have only one child and, and, yes. Uh, okay, now I would like to make the motion that we change the language here on number six and take out year and put per-event, so the twenty-five dollars per player per event.
I would say per-event or permitted use.
Per what?
Or permitted use.
Per-event or permitted use, because it could be a party, I mean, event could be...
A picnic.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion on that?
Uh, just one thing, Madam Chairman. The twenty-five that we just agreed on, per-family, the twenty-five is for play.
And it should almost be per, not participant, or, or languages, because if you're talking about private parties or organizations, if, if it's non-resident, it's really not a player, it's, it's a, per, what's the right terminology, I'm trying to go back to family here.
Per-hand, I mean, it would be like you're...
It is per-player, I guess the question is, are the leagues charging and collecting per-player, not per-family?
But this is, we're talking about six, this is private party, business organization or other group.
Per-person.
It's per-person.
Per-person?
Yeah, because we're, because we're talking about, or per-participant or attendee, you can do it that way. Because then you would cap...
Per-player or attendee?
Yeah, because then you would cap for that.
So, if I'm having a birthday party, if you're a resident, we don't charge you, if you're a non-resident, I, you're going to charge me twenty-five dollars per child to go have a party to...
That'd control your numbers.
For non-residents.
For kids. From that perspective, it's a little salty. Even I would agree to that.
I mean, I, to me, it's, it, it's almost like a, a facilities charge, if you're going to have a birthday party, it's eighty bucks regardless.
So, you have ten people, it's two-hundred and fifty bucks, yeah.
I guess you can, you can split that category, is that for the sports league activities, that's the non-resident twenty-five per, as far as events, it's twenty-five per.
See, that's where I'd rather go back to the event, just put it event that way, then you got, then you got ten people, like, it, it doesn't work out to be ridiculous.
Double, just fifty dollars to make it bigger, so you just pay the table and if you want, it's essentially an additional charge, I think that needs to be reworked, that would have...
Just, I apologize, I, in an effort to make this bigger, I tried to print the Word document, but I, it's not the...
Not dry wood?
No.
Okay.
So, that, I mean, a lot of you are, you're going, what's this confusion?
So, we've made motions that we didn't need to make, is that what you're telling me?
We've been having all this fun with the wrong guy.
It's okay, because you have a chance to look at it again, December seventh, when you finally approve it, so it's okay.
Can you just copy that one, the size that it is?
Mr. Guy's not going to be able to see it very well, but...
If he can't see it, I won't either.
Can you, when, scan, at least put up on the screen?
And again, let me just approve this, but if...
Listen, if it's clear, I can see it, bring it over.
But even for Gateway Schools, are we really charging the school twenty-five dollars per non-player per, per year? The, the school is having four games, and they're utilizing our field, we're going to go through and ask them to submit a...
But it's per-family, it's per-family per year.
Yeah, you're, you're, we're dealing with six, category six, correct?
If it's a single entity, you're not going to have...
We're not dealing with anything, clearly here from Mike.
To me, event looks better.
We're not, we're not reading through this logically, if it's a school event, we're charging the school for use, we're not charging the players. This is...
No, the school, the Gateway School still has a league.
No, they don't, they, we have an agreement with, we have a separate agreement with the law.
Yeah, with the Gateway Charter School.
Okay.
Not the public school Charter School.
So, so today, with Gateway, Gateway High School comes down and made it play a sporting event.
Correct.
We charge them a per-hour rate.
Right.
It's seventeen dollars per hour, if it's, I guess if it's a night game, we're going to look to charge them...
See, this is school league.
Yeah, but there is no school league, it's, I mean...
That, this, we have a separate agreement with the Gateway Charter School because of a...
A settlement agreement.
A settlement agreement, so that's why it says, or, or per-formal agreement, because all they pay is, they pay an hourly rate, they don't pay for lights.
But my point is this...
So, so we don't have the twenty dollars per family per year?
That doesn't apply to the Gateway Charter High School.
Why don't we strike your laws even? It's compute.
Okay.
I don't know that this is actually...
This one's got an extra category, the other one didn't even have.
Organized turn.
Organized turn.
That's the job stand.
Um, I'm going to withdraw my last motion. I, um, because we, and if we voted on three and four, raising that to twenty-five dollars per family per year, that doesn't even, that really was a vote that was worthless, because we're not charging the school for non-residents, correct?
Correct. It would all be applicable, and actually, you...
He's a leagues.
If it would be applicable to...
Score.
To four, because that's the, that's the...
That is.
...new league, so raising that twenty-five, so that motion would still stand.
Right, the, the motion will stand, but I'd like for it to be, to be corrected to not include three. So, can I have a motion that we need, that we rescind three from being a part of that? How do we do that, Tony?
That's, that's just a, you know, just a motion to, as to modify the prior action to remove, change, change to category three.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to rescind...
Or to modify the prior action.
Or, or rescind, um, Group Three from, uh, from the previous motion, to withdraw that from the, the group.
Well, from the, from the list to be...
From the list of...
To be accepted for purposes of advertising.
Exactly.
I'll second that.
You have a question?
I do have a question. Um, Gateway Schools, they only have that one league that you have the agreement with, there's no other time they use the soccer field?
The Charter High School, no, they just use it for high school soccer and the middle school.
How about the, the Gateway School next door?
They don't come over and...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so, so, um, honestly, at this point, Mike, I don't really, I'm not comfortable setting this for advertisement, and I don't think we need to sit here tonight and try and come up with a document that we can advertise. I don't know how the other board members feel, but, I mean, there's too many things that I think we would just like to change on this.
Can we do this, can we have him make the changes that we have suggested and approved, bring this back so that we can look at it and get it approved on the seventh?
Are you trying to back into a date?
No, so we, I mean...
Well, my, my understanding was the, the, the only date to back into was January first for the league.
To, to, right, to be able to start charging them for lights.
Charging them, and I'm not sure what time, the only, the only kicker from a time frame perspective is if on December seventh, if you say, okay, we have this, we buy a schedule, let's send an ad to the newspaper, that can go... that can go out the next day to the paper, hopefully they can get it in by Monday to meet that required timeframe, because there's ten days, I believe, I'll have to check that timeframe.
Hey, let's just be consider of...
Okay.
Of the league as well. I mean, they've got a budget for this increase. So which registration, um, registration start for...
We had shown them this and talked to them about it earlier, because they asked, not...
So they're anticipating an increase?
Increase.
So when does, when do the leagues actually start? When, when, if you were gonna create a new, um, agreement with them, when would that start?
January one.
Okay. If we did this, if we had the public hearing on January fourth, would that be too late? Why?
Because registration starts at least two months prior to the league starting.
So they're already in registration?
Well, not now. I think, uh, most of the leagues end, I think around, actually getting close, right? So they're getting close. So literally, when the leagues end, starting probably December, January is when they would be starting registration. So it would be, it would be close, um...
Why can't we take and have this for the meeting on the seventh, and set the date with the paper, and, uh, do that immediately following that meeting, and meet the ten, ten days?
Yeah, ten days, that's what you're...
So you're looking at seventeenth, eighteenth?
In, in what we could...
Twenty, something like that.
Twenty versus the next.
I, I thought there was also opportunity during the public hearing on the seventh, because if the public had some concerns, you have the opportunity at that time to adjust the document, yeah? So I, I mean, so I don't think that...
That's the other way.
I don't...
Just go on ahead and do it, and then adjust it, after you get input.
But you might, I think what we're looking for is a revision to this, right? Would you, that's what I would expect, I want maybe a, just a next version of this.
Okay.
Maybe, if you can, go from seven categories, each other included, down maybe three or four? And just bring up language, if it's, if it's not applicable, remove it.
Well, he's probably got good reasons why he had it, rather than subtract.
I don't have any trouble with that, let's, my thing is just go on ahead and get it. We always have the opportunity to make any changes after the public hearing, let's just go be done with it.
Yeah, what we can try to do, I, I can coordinate, uh, try to coordinate with the news press to have the notice sent to them in advance, that says, don't pull the trigger until the eighth, so it's be placed in the paper on the eleventh, which gives us the ten days.
That's...
I will try to achieve that.
That's what I would do.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with having a hearing, as, as long as, we're, we're saying that there's, there's gonna be a revision, or an opportunity for more conversation.
Because some of the stuff that we talked about isn't on here. Like, the last motion that I made, that I pulled, uh, it wouldn't, it isn't even out.
We'll, we'll have him do that, and incorporate that, go on ahead and advertise it, and we can then make the changes after the public hearing.
And, uh...
Save time.
The, and I'd like to see the twenty dollars per family per year taken off of, of group three.
Okay.
Since, because it's not applicable, what he seems...
So right now, the plan is that you come back with the revised document on the seventh. The notice will already be sent to the paper by that date, with the request that we can pull the trigger the following day, if we continue to have the hearing for the twenty-first. So it gets in the paper no later than the eleventh, and we meet the timeframe.
I agree, I agree with that.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Then, this'll be the seventh. But I'm here for the...
She will be here for the twenty-first at the meeting.
Can you send by phone? Will you be available by phone?
Uh...
You can ca- you can call in, yeah.
Why can't we have the, why can't we have the public hearing on the seventh?
We don't have the rates and fees and schedule chart to show them right now. We, it's all...
Well...
We can't do it that quick. The twenty-first will work.
Well, I was going, I actually under supervisor comment, I was gonna ask that we drew away with the twenty-first meeting, because it's so close to Christmas, and I thought it would be a nice gift for staff, and we really didn't have anything that was that pressing, that needed to be done before the end of the year.
Goodness.
So, and I knew that...
There may be.
Oh, okay, um...
So that's why I'm asking the question, why, uh...
Well, my concern is that the document, if a document that gets put out there is, would require... No, so if we have a document that, I don't even know, I'm sure the board knows what all the changes are.
Yeah.
Number two, that we have a document out there that could be substantially changed at the public hearing, as opposed to a little tweaking. Uh, and I don't know if that would happen or not.
Okay, for one, if we just take, I'd like to take your comments, that we, document today. If there's any follow-up, we need to send it...
No, you can't do that, right?
We can't send it to Chris, and he, and then he...
No.
Present the revised document?
No, no, yeah, I'll speak in the public center, yeah.
Can I just keep talking, keep saying that?
No, sir, no, it's...
Yes, Mrs. Swerden.
Got the idea.
Yes.
I, I just say go with what Tony suggested, that's the, the best way of doing it.
Well, unless the chair, and the board has an inclination to not want to have the meeting on the twenty-first.
I wanted to let Mrs. Swerden speak. Couldn't we just make the motion and make the changes now? And, and on the seventh, then we see them, with the budget, this, we only want to make a few changes.
Again, you can do that, you can say, okay, this document, make, for purposes of setting the public hearing, we accept this document with these changes, and then, that's what will be available to the public, and a strike through, and I, I would suggest it be a strike through, underlined version, from what currently exists, or a document that says proposed, for this one, and existing on one, on a two-sided piece of paper, so people can understand the impact.
Which means that we have a greater chance that there could be a, more than just a simple tweaking on the seventh, that's the issue.
Not necessarily. We're only changing the... Um, and, and that's what I was gonna bring up, is there any other changes between Mike had already taken off, line through soccer field and book fields? We lined through the twenty dollars per family under Gateway Schools. And then that changed, uh, group four, the twenty to twenty-five dollars. Those are the changes we've made so far, and the other things that we were talking about aren't on this sheet. So I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion, we accept it.